Councilmember Wyden Beck.
Here.
Councilmember Wyd Apple.
Here.
Next, I have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to have the agenda.
Second, we have a motion in the second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it's adopted. Next, we have any opportunity for any public comments? If you have something to speak about concerning the, an agenda item or something else, please identify yourself for the record. Hearing none, we'll move on to scheduled appearances. We have Josh Lowell is with us from Ayers. We have, they have a financial and TIP update for us. So Josh, if you want to go ahead and, the floor is yours.
Sure, no problem. I would like paper copies of that.
I would like a paper copy.
Yeah.
Don't like hotcakes.
Yep. Sure.
I'll just leave the rest here.
Okay, so thanks for having me so much. I think the last time I was here in 2001 when we did the last podcast. So that was the last time I was here. My colleague Sean Less is probably nearby a few times for different things in the intervening years. So I'm on debt for tonight. So we can give you kind of like a financial update of your existing debt. Talk about some existing projects that you've got in the Hopper and your tax increment district. And feel free to interrupt me whenever you want. You can make this pretty interactive today. So the first slide here is to go over your general obligation borrowing capacity. So this is, geo-debt is really the bread and butter for most municipal debt that is going to be issued by communities. This is backed by property taxes. So since it's the most stable form of revenue that any community gets, this is also the lowest cost and most commonly used type of financing instrument. So you got very low rates the last time we went out to the bond market for you in 2021. I think that those interest rates are still around the 2.1 range, something like that, which is historically low for that time. Obviously, you guys have read in a lot, over the last several years that interest rates have gone up since then. And we got some good news earlier this week and last week that interest rates have just been cut for the first time in several years. So that's a little bit of history for you, just kind of where we are now in the bond market. Kind of getting back to historical norms, the way interest rates are right now, probably pretty close to where they were about four or five years ago before they went to historic lows and then came up a few years ago. So things have kind of settled down a little bit. But in terms of your borrowing capacity and what's relevant to the city of Duran, is you don't have a ton of debt outstanding right now. The only two that we're tracking are those two issuances from 2021, the bonds and then the taxable notes that we also did that year. Those two debt assurances funded some streets projects in the, sorry, in the city, and then also some projects in your tax increment district. And so that's what we have right now. Your capacity is set by state law and they set it for 5% of any community's total equalized value. So what that means for Duran right now is that it actually just went up. You can see on that chart on the line, your total capacity went up because the value of the community decreased. So it used to be at 6.5%, and now it's gone up to about 7.6%. And that is the total amount of general obligation debt you can have of all the principal payments of all your debt. So since you have the two, that's about 2.6 million remaining in capacity. So the nuts and bolts here is that you've got plenty of run room to issue new debt for new projects if you need to. We don't really see that as a meaningful for the both of you guys. Frankly, it shouldn't be for most communities except our very smallest communities. Any questions on geo-debt capacity and what that is? So we can go ahead and jump to the next slide, and this is the debt levy. So rather than on the previous slide, it was really just the principal of payments, this is the principal and interest. Okay, so basically what is due? And importantly to note, it's only what is responsible for the levy. So some of those projects that we had, specifically in 2021, at both of them, the bonds that we did were some streets products, but also the utilities underneath the streets that were refurbished at the same time. So there's a portion of that one that is paid by the water utility and the sewer. And then the 2021 taxable note is paid entirely by TID3. So that actually one doesn't show up on this chart at all. So what's most important to take away from this is right now, in 2024, your principal interest payment on your debt levy side is about 200,000. With doing nothing else, if there were no additional projects, then you would see that drop to where it is right now. On the next slide, I'll show you in a second, the impact of the 2024 notes. It was just a couple of months ago to fund the share of the fire truck, pool project, and it was a third project cost that was about.
Streets.
Streets, thank you. That's included in that. So really what we want to focus on on this slide is given that this is the shape of your existing debt, everything that was done in the past, where do you want to see this curve going on from here on out? Sometimes, some communities that we work with want to make sure that this is kind of a level picture because then if communities and residents see the taxes go down, that's helpful. Most people like to see their taxes go down. On the flip side, people don't like to see it go back up after you issue new debt. So a lot of times we want to figure out what level we want to fill this in with new debt and new projects and what your trajectory is going to be like moving forward. So the next slide is really just a quick table summary of what I understand are your most recent upcoming projects. We're going to go over here. So we're going to show you the impact of the notes that were agreed to just a couple of months ago. I think it was in May. Then we can talk about the Madison Street project, which is mostly going to fall on your tax increment district. And it's also my understanding that you want to do some annual capital projects and see how we can fit that in under your current debt levy as well. So that's just a quick. So the next, any other questions on that? Is there anything else I should be aware of that gets added to this?
With the debt levy, is there like, is it okay and do you recommend going, like capping that out? Or is there like a certain percentage that you want to stay below what your capacity is?
Well, for the geo-debt capacity, I think it depends on your future products and your needs and kind of basing it on growth as well. I do get that question a lot. I think it really depends on always at least having some buffer for your known unknowns, I guess is the way I would phrase it. Like, I don't know, if there's some minimum amount that you would need in a given year. If, you know, most communities have somewhat of a rough idea of which streets need to be paved at some point in the future, right? But then there are going to be emergency things like potholes or, you know, there's specific damage or something like that that you need to improve or something like that. So it depends on the size of the community, but I would try and think of it that way. Just maybe a million dollars of capacity remaining because that usually is the kind of thing where you would say that most emergencies should fall in that bucket. Most street improvements kind of things generally tend to fall, the planned ones, I should say. Usually tend to be above a million, somewhere between a million and three million if it's a major renovation. But something that breaks that is unforeseen usually will fall under that line. That's kind of a very broad picture of something that I would say, but I would feel comfortable for a very small community saying something like that, a million or less. You guys aren't even near that yet.
Keyword yet?
So two factors will come into that. Additional debt that's brought on and how quickly your community tends to grow. So since you went from 6.5% to 7.6% year over year, that means pretty substantial growth. I think it was about 30 million dollars over year over year in your equalized value. So that's pretty substantial, not dissimilar from a lot of communities we've worked with in Wisconsin because the equalized value of the market has just been so hot in the last few years. Seeing communities go anywhere between 5 and 10% growth has not been uncommon from our vantage point. So, you know, I don't think Duran is growing particularly fast or slow compared to some of your peer communities. Okay, so the next slide, we've got additional colors now here. So everything in gray is everything that was agreed to in previous years. The red is the effect of the 2024 notes, which we had for the streets project, the pool and the fire truck. So we already have a defined repayment schedule for that. For whatever reason at the time, it goes from about 60,000 something next year to the payments around 130 before they drop back down to the 60 level. So between the gray and the red, those are what I'm seeing as our fix, ones that we have, that we've already agreed to. And everything else in the green is variable. So since we already have those projects, this is kind of where I wanted to get you to think about what is your level that you're comfortable with and where you want to see the levy going over time. Since we already have the existing debt levy and the 2024 notes, I sized the annual capital shown in green as one-year notes that you could do to keep you basically at the same level throughout the relevant planning period through 2041. That's as long as your debt currently goes out. So I think that this is the question of how much capacity do you really want to keep on? What future projects do you have? What level of taxation are you comfortable with? Also knowing that you're going to be growing over the next, you know, 20-plus years or in perpetuity, hopefully. Most communities we want to see going forever, right? So this is really what I would consider the beginning of a conversation for you to figure out what are your remaining plans and where you want to go and what you want to do. If you like it to be leveled, you can say, we're going to keep taxes here even though we're growing. That's one way you approach it. If you want to reduce some of these out-year borrowings and have lesser projects there, this is really the nice time to start thinking about those kind of things. So with that, I'll just kind of get off into your discussion.
When you put together your numbers concerning, that was that if we use the whole 550,000.
That's right.
For that, because we're still not determined that we need all that 550,000 is one thing. The other thing is that if we go ahead and if we want to keep the levy about where it is this year, because according to this, what you're saying in 2025, if we keep that same amount, then we're paying off more of that debt earlier.
That's right. So everything in gray has already been committed to.
Committed to, but when, the other parts with the red, so, but those, that option is available to us. That if we want to say that, okay, this is the number that comes out at the end of the day, that all of a sudden we put all those things together and say that the total is going to be 475,000 dollars, just to pick a number out of that 550.
Yep.
And when we get that together, but if we turn around and keep our levy the same, we can pay 100,000 dollars that off right away.
That's right. So for whatever reason, you know, Tracy sent me the documents earlier today. You know, as I mentioned, the structure is that it starts with 60,000, assuming you drew the full thing. And then it goes up to 130 for a couple of years and then comes back down. You know, we didn't assist with that debt schedule to prepare it when it came together. So if that was agreed to, previous administrator and the bank, I'm not sure if you're locked into that or if they would want to see an adjustment to that or how that got done. But if you wanted to keep your levy the same, you could increase it there, start paying it down sooner, and then it would squeeze out what's remaining in the green. Or you could go up to a higher level entirely and add on whatever you wanted. If you did want to go in higher, this is kind of one of my next slides to the end, process thinking it through later, we want to start thinking about that now so you can figure it out and adopt that for next year's budget and when you set the levy, probably sometime in November. So this would be a good time, this is a great time to have this conversation.
Because one of the things that we had talked about with that, and I understand that amount of money of the 550,000 is a little bit higher, but then we have talked about potentially doing some other small projects. 100,000, 150,000, somewhere on a, at least, maybe not just an annual basis, but at least every couple of years.
Okay.
Matt, that was sort of what the schedule we were looking, trying to do, at least every couple of years?
Yeah, we were trying to do about a hundred, 150,000 dollar project. Try to do one every year if possible or every other year at worst case scenario.
So what this shows is in the first year, so since we have this kind of a regular payment schedule in the red, it starts slow and then goes higher. In order to stay at the same tax level as you had this year for next year, with everything that we know today, right, you would issue a small issuance right here of 60,000, which probably pays for some projects here in the city, probably not a ton. But then as you move farther out, these get to be closer into the hundreds. And I think that these ones here are around 170, something like that by the time you get to the end. I mean, 2041 feels like a long time from now. So hopefully 150,000 in those years is still a decent amount. I don't know what inflation is going to do over the next 16 or 17 years.
The only bad thing about those green lines is those are always changing when we do that Madison Street project.
Yeah, well, maybe. So I think it depends how much we're able to charge to the TIP and the other utilities or any other funding sources. So why don't we actually talk about that now when we come back to the levy? That's a great segue. Okay, so let's chat about Madison Street. I think that'd be helpful. So just some quick status on your current TID3 tax increment district. Does anyone need a primer on tax increment districts, how they work, financing from all that, how it's done?
Why don't you get us a quick?
Yes, absolutely.
Get some real folks up here.
So really, the main thing that we're trying to do is collect all of the tax revenue that comes just from the growth. So in, let's just say, a hypothetical new tax increment district out in former agricultural area that you wanted to redevelop. Let's say we've got a proposal to do some housing up there. If there's basically nothing out there right now, right, that's not generating any tax revenue, there's no revenue coming into it. After the district gets created and, you know, it's wildly successful and is now, let's say, 10 million dollars, rather than for every property tax dollar that comes in under the current scenario with no tax increment district, every dollar that comes in is split between the city, the tech college, the county and the school district. That's how property taxes work now. With a tax increment district, any dollars that are generated from new development in the district get fully used by the city to pay for any infrastructure that was needed to make that district happen. Okay? So rather than only getting, say, a third of the dollar, now you're getting the full dollar. And that's really what tax increment financing is what makes it special. Okay? That's how it works. So you're using the growth and the revenue from new development to pay for the infrastructure in itself. How that works for tax increment district number three, I can walk through how to read our cash flows. So moving from left to right, it's basically, we're going to show the revenue and then your total expenses. And then by the time you get to the right-hand side, you'll see your total balances. When we start looking at revenue that is generated from development, there's always a lag. So whatever is constructed, and I'll just focus on that top line, constructed in your 2020 gets that value the next year by your successor, which finally starts to generate revenue in 2022. Okay? I guess I'll go one line down there for what happened with last year in 23. So there's always a bit of a time gap between when something gets constructed to when you actually get dollars back so you can spend that. You're right in the middle of this district, so you're already collecting revenue from development that happened many years ago to pay for products that are already in flow. Okay? So the first thing I'm going to, we can just go through some history. This district was created in 2007 as a light elimination district, right? So that gives you 27 years to collect revenue and spend down project costs for any projects that were designed to help eliminate light or, you know, refurbish old sites or demolish old buildings in town. I wasn't here in 2007, so those are just some examples of things that were done in other places that I've worked. Okay? The most important thing to remember is that you get 27 years to spend money for that district. So this one closes in 2034. That's the last year you'll be collecting revenue. Okay? So let's go through construction year 22, value year 23, 24, so for the current year. I'll just use that as an example. So that is stuff that was valued last year and is generating revenue for this year. So since 2007, that number that you see there for TID value increment, that's how much the district has grown in the new property taxes that have been generated since 2007, 10 million in new value. Okay? When you multiply that by the city's tax rate of $19.25, it's generating about 195,000 in revenue every year. Okay? So it's doing pretty well. Compare that to the 71,000 that was paid this year for that 2021 taxable geo-note. And that means that in just this year alone, you're having a positive balance of 74,000. Or, excuse me, your total expenses are 74,000, but your annual balance is 121,000. The next column over, that cumulative balance, shows how much your annual balances are adding over time. Okay? So by the, we're projecting that after this year is over, you'll have 280,000. And when you take that year over year over year, we can see that in this year's new value, looking for next year's revenue, you've got another increase of about 1.3 million. These numbers, that 11,436 was presented in a state report that's generated every August 1st. So we always get really excited in our office on August 1st because then we get to update all of our new cash flows and see if we're successful in that. In this case, again, we're doing very well. So you keep adding up all those annual balances over time, and by the time you get to the year 2034, you've got about 2.1 million in cash that has been building up in these accounts over all these years. So the nuts and bolts here is TID3 is very healthy, right? So this is why I think that we're in good shape to be able to absorb the Madison Street project, even though it's a 3.4 million approximate project. I understand there's also going to be some grant funding potentially for.
Yeah, we've already got the grants.
Okay, great. So that's, that's very helpful then.
And we have to use it by when?
20, June of 2027 is the sunset date.
Okay, great. So we've got plenty of time to find a finance on this project.
Yep.
Okay. So any questions about the current status of the district or the cash flows in general, like if there's confusion about a number? I see these every day, so sometimes I tend to gloss over some of the details.
And one other thing that we can consider is this, if, if we don't do anything and these numbers hold up and we get to the end, we're sitting here in 2034, and that balance is there and we have to close the TID legally, you have to, as soon as it's your, is this time, son? And once you get to the end of it, at that point, anything left in there is redistributed to the other taxing entities that are involved. The school, correct, 100% of that.
No pro-rata share of how they fit into the levy. So you'll probably get like a third or 40% of that. But I guess, yes, you're right. You are a member of the taxing jurisdiction, so you'll get a distribution for that.
We would, but then also the school district, the technical school at the county also would get there.
Yes.
So we want to use it all, obviously.
We don't want to use it all. We don't have to use it all, but at least it's an option to help pay for this, get this project.
Yep. I will say that almost every community we work with does use it all.
We want to use it all. We want to use it all before the end.
Before the end, yeah.
And so on and so forth.
You don't want to give it back.
Right.
So is there, safe to say your 2.1 million, that's not all going to be able to be used on a project because you've got some costs and, and closing and all, something about 1.5 or 6 or 7 of it?
So we're just going from initial estimates, but let's walk through the next page. All right. Okay, so we, I don't think it quite, based on what we know right now, again, this is not factoring any future growth. So hopefully, this year's 11.4 will be next year's 11.9, something like that. I don't know. Tax rates are also going to change. But in our office, we tend to just use the most recent values and just hold them throughout just because that's the most conservative way to do it. If not, then we're just kind of like picking at things. The tax rate is going to go up and down over time. They've been trending lower, but that's because equalized values have been going up, as I mentioned, to the market. So it's just naturally compressing. Everyone's levy is basically capped due to levy limits, but then the values keeps going up. So that means you just do the math and divide one by the other. That means the rate goes down, right? I'm not sure if we're at the bottom of that yet. That just depends on how property taxes go. Anyway, we don't usually project new property tax growth. We just hold it consistent throughout because I think it just makes it cleaner analysis and just kind of gives you a better standpoint of where you are now. Otherwise, you're just saying, well, increase by 3%, 5%, 2% becomes kind of meaningless. Okay, so the way that I have this modeled right now is, you know, we think of it as a 3.4 million dollar project. You know, you've got about 800,000, 900,000 in grant funds. You also have, by the time we're getting to the year 2025, you can see that projected cash still remaining at 426. I would think about using some of your TID cash there that already exists to reduce the amount that you have to borrow so you don't have as much interest cost. Okay? So the reason that we show these two columns here in purple, projected cash for notes, I'm using 550,000 from your existing cash to reduce the total amount of borrowing. And then the actual projected borrowing is a little over 2 million, which includes some borrowing costs and financing fees and things like that. Okay, so the reason that these first two payments are 145 and the rest go down to 225 is because we've got it theoretically structured so that it wraps around that the last two years of the 2021 notes so that your payments for everything combined are closely matched to your revenue, right? This is a hypothetical model that I came up with in the last few days, okay? But this is a way that we could do it if we look forward, okay? So you can see we've got those payments going around for the rest of life we did. One thing you might notice is that now there are some roads that have magically appeared after 2034 in green. So the other thing that we can do is seek two extensions of your tax increment district that are allowed by state law. The first one is called the standard extension. And this is afforded to tax increment districts that can show that they're not going to be able to meet all their project costs through their existing life of the district. So by the time we got to 2027 and took out financing for 2 billion, we'd be able to show the payments going low beyond your existing life and then you would end your current life of the district in a deficit. And then you can go back to the other taxing jurisdictions, the joint review board, and you could show them this analysis and then they have to give you the request, or grant your request for the three years. So that's the first three-year extension. The second three-year extension that's afforded to you is called the tech college extension. So this is based on state law. It was enacted back in 2014 when at that time, the legislature shifted some of the funding around and gave higher tax rates to the tech colleges. But what happened when that happened is the mill rates for tax increment districts all went down slightly. So almost every district that was created and was in existence at that time, it was actually made worse off by that legislation and that shifting of the burden. So now they give you another opportunity to extend the district for three years to kind of put you back into the black from when they penalized you in 2014. So by doing those two, you get an extra six years to pay off this debt. So that's the first change there. So you can see how we've got, done two things. A structure of the debt at the beginning, so it matches your payments on the front end, giving you more opportunity to pay that back in the back end. But even with that, we're still showing that there would probably still need to be some small deficit to be made up each year. And the way that we're getting to a positive annual balance here is that I've got some additional contributions from other funds from the city shown here in blue, under the revenue side. And so maybe that is a share that's paid by the utilities, since it's likely that as part of this project, we're not just going to look up the streets, but probably also do some utility work. So it seems like likely that the water and sewer utilities might share a portion of that debt. Okay? So the 8,000 and 13,000 numbers there are the numbers that I've used to just fill in the negative for the tax increment district. I think that if we started working on this in 2027, we would really want to dial into the strength, the financial strength of utilities and make sure, figure out what could be shared where. Maybe you want to keep that burden as far off the utilities as you can. Maybe you say, you know, we want them to be picking up their entire share and then the TID can only handle its share. There's a lot of work and analysis that can go into it at that point. But I think that to me, the nuts and bolts is, we're actually pretty close to having TID3 being, carry the entire weight of this project. I mean, if you told me that we're going to finance a nearly 3 million dollar project and the tax increment district is able to handle most of it, but we just need 8,000 a year from some other source, I would probably say that that's not a bad deal.
So when, so we go ahead and we get this figured out. Okay, we know we got the grant money. We know we have. When we take out, when we take out the actual debt, is that all geo-debt or is some of it put on the revenue funds?
We could do it with a tax increment revenue bond, and I think that your actual coverage here, you're generating enough revenue here so that it could do that. So this is just another repayment source, just like you probably already have safe drinking water loans or clean water fund loans, which are already. water loans or clean water fund loans, which are revenue-based debt. So we already talked about how geo debt is backed by property taxes. The revenue-based debt for the water utility is backed by the revenues and raising charges of those utilities. So a taxing revenue bond would be backed by the revenues of the taxing district. But what I would say is, those are all more expensive than geo debt. So there are lots of different ways to do it. If your primary concern is that you want the lowest cost of capital, general obligation debt is probably the better way to go. If the other way, if you're thinking about it, is preserve your general obligation borrowing capacity, then we would pledge it to a taxing revenue bond, and we would help you think about the trade-offs there. But that, that would probably also increase the interest rates on this and then will make this more expensive. When I ran this, I put it at five percent.
And what's usually the difference in the rates? Couple, a point, two?
It could be.
And I know it's sort of a guess.
Yeah, a point or two points. Uh, I think for, you know, bank issued debt, actually, if this is going more than ten years and it's two million, we'd probably do it as a securities offering, which the five percent is probably on the high side, and I'm just guessing right now, if we did one for Duran, it'd probably be four and a half percent. But if we did taxing revenue bond with a bank, six percent maybe? That's what the state trust fund loan is offering right now, so that would be the easiest way to do it. So I would think somewhere around there.
Isn't the Fed promising another cut right after the election?
They're supposed to do it too before the end of the calendar year.
I know they're not going to, yeah, I know they're not going to do it before the election, but they said that they possibly do it before the end, end of the calendar year.
So under current assumptions, I think that it could happen. Again, we're not factoring in increased growth here, so that could certainly help. By the time we get to two thousand twenty-six or two thousand twenty-seven, we'll have more information on that, and be able to validate it farther.
Yeah, because I think our attention is, and again, we haven't made this decision yet, but the intention was that we're, we're looking at if we can pull this off, we would probably want to do it, not this next summer, but the summer of twenty-six, I think is what, what we're, by then, we could start ducks in a row again, exactly how we're going to do it. Obviously, this puts us in a situation with another option, and, which obviously makes sense financially to the city, and, and so as far as putting together a package and so on, it, it probably gives us the way to go, you know? And as far as, and again, I know every community's a bit different, but this is a general practice, people, you find this being used quite a bit. If they have an opportunity within their, their finance districts to be able to do this?
A hundred percent, this is what.
This is to do so.
So maybe, yeah, to go back to this levy chart, Madison Street doesn't even exist on yet. But I'm saying for the most part, we could probably even keep it off the levy entirely. Maybe a little bit gets picked up by the utilities, and I think that once we really get that dialed in, you know, if you, I think this is really where the policy consideration comes in. Some people, it depends on where your raising charges are currently, right? So we really want to think through, how much can they absorb of their own costs? Maybe that's where you want to do it. I think there are a lot of different scenarios that, once we really get ready to do this project and focus on it, I would present you a couple of different ways to think about it. As you mentioned before, if the taxing district shoulders every dollar of the burden, then there's nothing left at the end to distribute to the other taxing jurisdictions, like we mentioned. On the one hand, that could be good. On the other hand, I'm just thinking right off the top of my head, by the way, if your utilities share some of that, because they already can under their, your current rates and charges, you don't have to increase rates, let's assume that that's true for a minute, then that means the taxing district doesn't have to share the entire burden and draw it down to its last dollar. And then let's say there's five hundred thousand left at the end, and you get a third of that, that's another hundred fifty thousand which you can do whatever you want with. So these are some of the trade-offs and pros and cons that we'll bring to you once you're ready to really think it through at that time. I think probably the thing that's most important is to make sure that we figure out whatever we're going to do for two thousand twenty-five. If you're going to fill in next year's, this year's levy and next year's collection with a, a small debt issuance, just so you can make sure you stay at the same level, because if you take away the green and focus on what you have in the red, then you go down and tell people you got a tax break before next year's tax increase, which is something that most communities I work with want to avoid.
Any other questions? And of course, if anything comes up, you guys think about over the next couple of weeks and so on and so forth, I just direct it to Tracy, she'll be able to contact you folks to clarify anything else.
Yeah, I think the most important thing that I want to leave you with is figuring out what you want to do with this levy limit, uh, yeah, that's fine, levy limit, that space of the green, and how you want to draw it down and figure out that payment for the existing note. If you take it all down and say, we want to pay up just that one, have red go up, the rest of these go incrementally down, that's certainly a way to do it. And then figure out what you want to fill in with any other capital projects and where you want that levy to be. Maybe you're fine having it go up for a few years and then go back down, maybe you want to go down for a few years before it goes back up. We can obviously make this chart, however you want it to be, if you're going to be flexible on it, to do one-year notes with your local bank or however you want to do it. A lot of times, people call us for those kind of things, which maybe makes more sense when you get out to this range. If you're going to do a sixty thousand dollar note, probably doesn't make sense to bring us in to do an RFP to multiple local banks, because the incremental difference in the lowest rate to the highest rate isn't going to matter too much for a sixty thousand dollar a year borrowing. Or call us and pay us to do it for it. That sounds great to me.
Okay, any other questions?
The last thing I want to go over quick was just a timeline slide on the back, if you can even play yourself. This is kind of teed up more for if you wound up going for an RFP. This is before I had the information on the two thousand twenty-four note, because I thought we were still going to have to do it. But you still probably want to look at this timeline and think about that. Tracy knows how to work this. Just making sure that if you wind up doing another small borrowing with your local bank, just make sure you get your results back in time to feed into the budget. That's the thing I would take away there.
Okay, any other questions? Josh, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Next, move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail. There's a separate item on the regular agenda, may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and we have picnic license requests for brews on the Chippewa, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from two until end. Some may make a motion concerning consent agenda.
I don't like the motion. How do we approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Approved. Next, move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. This past Friday, we had a meeting, the, with the rural fire, a couple representatives of the rural fire, Tracy, myself, Jamie from the fire department, to talk about the fire district. And moving forward, there's a number of things. We are going to have another meeting scheduled as we continue to put those plans in place. There's a number of questions that need to be answered prior to, and some homework that needs to be done, and obviously, we'll do our part as far as the city is concerned. And again, we'll be moving forward. I'd like to congratulate the fire department for having a nice push-in ceremony this past Sunday. Do appreciate you asked me to say a few words. I think it went really well. It was great to see some friends I haven't seen in a, in a, in a long time, Hank and I own Nihoff, of course, the former chief from years ago. Hadn't seen them back. It was great to see some other folks, and it was a nice, nice event and a great opportunity for the community to see the, the new fire truck, Truck Ten, and it was good. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Dr. Ryan Nelson, the superintendent we had talked about getting together, just to talk about a few things with the city. Just going to have a visit with the new superintendent tomorrow afternoon. The, the pool committee continues to work on, on the different things that we're going to be doing with honoring the folks that have donated the money. We do have another meeting set up, and we're, we're getting those together. We're sort of learning a number of things along the way. First time we put together something like this, but again, we're going with that. Also, the library is, have a, has a long-range planning committee, and they would like to start talking about long-range planning. They're going to be meeting here in a few weeks, and both Tracy and I will be sitting on that and working with the folks, it's members of the library board plus other community members, and so we'll be representing the city as far as long-range planning for a library. That's all I've got. Any questions? Okay, nothing came off the consent agenda? Administrator's report?
Yeah, I don't have much. The agenda, it's a pretty straightforward, just on my memo, I added the committee meetings that are scheduled for review of the budget. So Public Works Committee, Monday the fourteenth at five, Public Safety Committee, Monday the twenty-first at four thirty, Finance Committee, Monday the twentieth at four thirty. We'll have the planned budget public hearing, council meeting will be on November twentieth. That's a change. It's supposed to be on the thirteenth, we're bumping it back a week, just to get everything done and make sure that we got it, we have to advertise or, I expect to post the public hearing for the budget fifteen days prior, so that just gives us the next week to do that. And then we'll hopefully have the budget approved at that meeting. So also, just real quick on the tablets, they've worked pretty great. There was an issue with the chargers, with the plug, the actual plug piece, so if you're finding that your tablet's not charging properly, see if you can swap something out at your house, or we've got extra ones here that might help, because the ones that were, that I purchased after the tablets were purchased, apparently not a lot of them work. So we have extra ones here, if you find, maybe if I have any struggles with that at home. So that's all here. Any questions?
No questions for the city administrator? Next, we have discussion possible action regarding an IT audit. This is something that actually I brought up, something we haven't done in a while. Obviously, there's a lot of, it's, it's an ongoing process to make sure we're secure and all those types of things with our IT and, and so on and so forth. And I don't know exactly, you know, as far as it's something, what we're going to budget for, what does it take, who does it? But I, I think it's, I put it on the agenda to see that obviously, if there's interest on the council, that we would look at doing a complete review of all of our IT and our security measures to make sure that we are, are doing that. So I guess that's, and have you been through an IT audit?
I have.
And so what, I don't know what we're talking about entailing here?
So my experience has been, we can do RFPs to various companies to see what they would charge for that. We can, I can just reach out and say we want to hire somebody, we can get a cost, obviously cost first, I wouldn't, everybody's out of your commission. But yeah, then they come in, somebody would come in and just review everything that we have, all of our setup, our server, our firewalls, any of those type of things to determine where we sit and how, how vulnerable we might be or not. And then they make, can make a recommendation for us to fix what needs to be fixed and make us as secure as possible so that we don't get hacked into and, you know, make sure that the measures are in place to ensure that, that we're as safe as we can be and secure as we can be. So if you're acceptable to it, I can reach out to various companies and just, you know, basically do an RFP, request for proposal, and sort of take them to come in and just review our systems. Some companies will give us a full, broad spectrum of, here's, here's your needs, we can provide that for you, here's the cost, have a roadmap, this is what you're going to need next year, this is what you're going to need the year after, this is what you're going to need the year after, et cetera. So I mean, it's just a wide variety of services that, that various companies do offer. So if you're acceptable to that, I can certainly start reaching out and getting some folks to start reviewing that.
I'm just looking for a general consensus to give direction to the city. Let's go out and find out what this would cost us, but I think it's, we should always try to be ahead of the ballgame and then behind it.
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that.
Has anybody had one? Been, you been up one?
They do one as part of our, at the county, I think, that's part of our managed IT service.
Managed IT service. Okay, so we'll move forward then and come up with some requests for proposals on that. Next, we'll go on to public safety, police department, Chief Ridgway.
The only thing I have is homecoming week starts on Sunday with the five K. Did work out, we'll shave the, the run-walk routes. I'll be coming out on Sunday. I've got Jackson Boygan's on, who's a new part-timer, he's going to come out and work at intersection. County's got a deputy that's going to help me, as long as he hasn't any calls, and then the fire department's going to send a couple of trucks out as well. So we're going to go down, cross eighty-five in Tarrant Park, and then along by the campground on the bike trail, and then when we get to the sidewalk in front of Quick Trip, we're going to bring the sidewalk up to Highway ten, we're going to cross, and then they're going to turn on Madison Street, bring Madison Street down here, and then go past Moriah Park up to Montgomery Street by the fire department, and then up to Washington Street, back to Highway ten crossing and back to the school. So, or back to the, our block sports got blocked. So we worked out a route, and I eliminated some of the extra crossings that they wanted, just to kind of keep us from having to block Highway ten in multiple spots. So it worked out good. They've got over a hundred people signed up for it already, so it should be a good turnout for the run-walk. And then different events throughout the week, and then the parade on Friday afternoon. I'm going to be in Michigan for a wedding, my niece's wedding, so Brandon has been in charge of the parade as far as getting people organized, help out with traffic control. Sergeant Shellorn's going to come out and help him as well. So they've got that all planned out for the parade on Friday afternoon, but should be a good week of homecoming festivities and looking forward to it, and that's all I have for an update.
Any questions from the police department? Hearing none. Next, we move, discussion possible action regarding a chicken ordinance, because of some recent things that took place. It was, thought it was necessary that we actually don't have this in our ordinances concerning the keeping of chickens in the city. Administrator Carlson, if you sort of want to start out, and then of course, we'll turn it over to the chief to explain. This did go in front of the safety committee right beforehand, and we did have just one change as far as to that. So if you want to go ahead and start it.
Sure. So I had a resident contact me about a chicken ordinance, if we had one. She had a complaint, her neighbor has chickens, had a rooster, was causing some issues. After conversing with Chief Ridgway, we decided that, had realized that there was not a chicken ordinance in place, and so based on what he knew and, and the information that I had access to, we collaborated and created the chicken ordinance that's in your packet, and committee, as mayor just alluded to, reviewed it just before this meeting and made one slight change. Number three would say the chickens shall be provided with a covered enclosure within a fenced area, to update the, to amend the ordinance as stated that way. So it was recommended by committee to move forward, and here it is, so I don't know, chief, if you want to add anything to that.
No, I think, I think it's a good idea to have the ordinance in place to help protect our residents from having any nuisances and by, by their neighbors. It keeps people from having free-range chickens that may go into other people's yards. So I think it's good to have an ordinance to kind of regulate this, so.
The ordinance that's in front of you, according to state statute, we are not required to have a public hearing on this. We could if we wanted to, but again, it's, it's not, not required. I don't know if you've had the chance to read through it, if you have any questions about it. Of course, as we said, we just discussed it, it's safety here a few minutes ago.
Have you got any consideration with smell or odor coming from chicken coops?
Have many complaints. The complaints were more than roosters throwing and chickens running wild.
I think what will help that is the fact that in the ordinance, it talks about twenty-five feet from any residential structure on an adjacent lot, so that kind of will help neighbors as well from keeping some of those nuisances that this may cause by people having chickens, keep them away from all people's.
Let's limit on the number you can have. Probably it's a bigger problem if also somebody had twenty or thirty.
Correct.
Yeah, I think if limiting it to four, it shouldn't be a nuisance unless the owners are negligent of cleaning.
Make a motion? If somebody can make a motion concerning this?
Make a motion. We approve the ordinance with the draft changes for the chicken ordinance.
We can second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the chicken, keeping of the chickens ordinance for the city. Is there any more discussion, questions, comments, or concerns? The floor is open. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to, it's approved. Now do we have to publish?
Oh yes, it will be published and then I'll send it off to the ordinance company who posts it online so that it's updated there as well.
Next, we have discussion regarding handgun replacement purchase. We had discussed this also with safety. Chief Ridgway, if you'd like to explain exactly what the request is and then they say that there was a recommendation from the safety committee.
So our department received a $5,000 donation from an area business. We thanked them for that. And what I'm proposing using that donation for would be the replacement of our handguns. Our handguns are five years old, recommendation is to replace duty handguns every five to seven years. So I'd like to trade in our used handguns for new Glock Model 47s with the red dot sights. The red dot sights help officers shoot more accurately. They're safer for the officers as far as being able to see a subject's hands better than if they were aiming at with their iron sights. Anything below what they're aiming at with their sights, they can't see. So if their hands are below center mass where we aim, they may be dropping their gun, they may be complying with us at that point, but the officer might not be able to see it. Whereas a red dot sight allows us a full sight picture of the subject and what they're doing with their hands. So it makes it safer for the officers and the accuracy greatly improves with the red dot sight for most shooters. So this is something that we would have had to budget for, probably within the next year or two to replace our handguns. And so with this donation, I thought it was a good time to upgrade our handguns with the donation. So we'd be looking at replacing seven handguns and then we would go with the mini red dot sights, metal front sights which would work, they're a higher front sight. So in case the red dot wasn't working, whether it broke or a battery died, the officers would still be able to get a sight picture and then the holsters for them. The total project is $7,787. We would trade in our current weapons, they would give us $1,910 for our current weapons. And then we have an account credit with Ray O'Hairn, who I would go through, for $217.33 for an item that we had returned to them. So the total project cost is $5,659.67. We have the $5,000 donation. I would propose using the extras, putting the extra $659.67 into my vehicle maintenance budget. That's a $6,000 line item. We've had a very good year with our vehicle maintenance, with two of our squad cars being newer. So I'm expecting that to stay down, hopefully nothing major happens, but I would look at taking that $659 out of my vehicle maintenance budget.
And Chairman Hooker, this was, came through safety committee?
Yeah, we just discussed it at safety, it was recommended from the committee, as shown.
Okay, anybody got any questions concerning the financial part or about, particularly about the weapons or? The one thing that I had asked the question, because Chief Ridgway is a certified trainer, he would be able to do all the training with these weapons. We wouldn't have to go outside to do that, that we would be able to do that all in-house. And he would be able to do all the training for these red dot. Okay, any other questions? If not, would somebody like to make a motion concerning the use of the donation and shifting of the dollars from the vehicle fund? Would somebody like to make a motion?
So, second.
We have a motion and second that we approve the donation purchase proposal. Are there any more questions? Hearing none, since we're actually moving some money into budget, I would like a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Okay, motions agreed to, we'll move forward with the handgun purchase. Next, we move on to the fire department. As far as anything to report on your end, of course, we've already reported on that we've been meeting to talk about the new fire district and obviously that will continue. Ambulance, anything as far as you know?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay. Move on to Public Works Utilities, engineers report, Russ.
Yes, could you do a couple of quick updates? The water filter plant project, design and approvals. On September 16th, we received our Wisconsin DNR plan and spec approval. PSC review is in process. Received some comments today from PSC. Some additional items are asking for us to address to complete the application. So that's the last item we'll need before we can bid the project will be PSC approval. Other items on the agenda, number three for payment, but Sixth Avenue East project, that's complete. And that item on the agenda is the final pay request number four. Pool project continues to make progress and Matt will give an update on everything on the pool project. And that's all I have, anyone has any questions?
Any questions for the city engineer? Hearing none, move on to Public Works Utilities, Matt?
Yes, a couple of quick things, boat landing has repair of the slats going down to the river started today. If you know, the Sportsman's Club donated some money to replace three panels all down here and add three panels into the river, down here behind the shop and down at the southern boat landing at the other end of town. That has commenced today. While I was down there, there was a few extra panels that were in pretty rough shape. So I added a few extra panels on to that cost, which I got some money in the park budget to take care of. So they're working on that, the next day or two, they should have that finished up. Guys are out doing some blacktopping up on Well Street here, they'll be out doing a few other patch repairs. The county's scheduled to come in and do some paving patches for us the week of October 7th. So see some blacktopping going on over the next couple of weeks. And they finished up the spray patching yesterday as well. Last but not least, the pool, the deep end walls were poured a week ago. The shallow end walls from three to five were poured on Tuesday. So they're starting to strip the deep end walls now. Next Monday, Tuesday, they'll strip the shallow end walls. And next week, they'll work on the deep plumbing from the main drains from the deep end, connecting that to the building and a bunch of other plumbing in all the pool that has to go in. And by the end of next week, they should be backfilling the current deep end structure. So the site will kind of start taking a little shape. The piles will start going down here, probably the end of next week. I'll have a better update for you on the shallow end by our next meeting in October, but that's the next two-week outlook on the pool. Things are moving along according to our plan. So I don't think we'll have any issue meeting our objective until November 1st. It's just when we can get back in there this spring, sooner, the sooner the better.
Raptors, what is it?
Yes, they're pouring the floor in the bathhouse either tomorrow or Friday, depending on when the trench drain shows up, we're waiting on some extra floor drain. Once that shows up, they should be pouring the floor tomorrow or Friday, depending on when that shows up. And then the rafter guy will be mobilizing next Monday, Tuesday.
Any other questions for Public Works Utilities? We'll move on to discussion possible action regarding next level pay request number four in the amount of $18,201.43. So you said this is the last pay request? Does this also include the, what we hold back, I mean, this is. You went through all the punch lists, everything's been.
Releases the retainage.
Retainage and everything.
Right.
Obviously, when we get this done, it'll put us in a situation, we'll see what our final numbers are and it'll have an effect. Of course, what we were talking about earlier about that 550,000, exactly how much? We get the budget process and decide exactly how much of that money we're going to need. And that will, but with this year, that'll obviously close this one out, so we'll have a final number where we're at. Any questions concerning this pay request number four from next level?
When was that punch list done? We got a year warranty from the punch list, right?
Yeah, we got a year warranty from when we basically approved this.
Yeah.
What did we originally budget for this?
So we were originally at two and a quarter?
I think it was 220.
Yeah.
It was 27.
Yeah.
So we're about 20 under?
Yes.
Budget, you're no nice, budget wise.
Make a motion, we approve the pay request to next level for $18,201.43.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the pay request. Are there any more questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to. Next, we have discussion possible action regarding Duran Builders pay request in the amount of $464,626. This here is, we're still obviously submitting these to the money that's already been raised through the, although this is going to get us down there probably today. Because that will be through that amount and then of course, our next one we'll be, we'll be using on a fund balance to pay, to make the next so many requests and then we'll have an idea where we'll be at as far as if we, about borrowing any money from what we've already agreed to, security, financial, get through the budget process, have an idea of when those dates are going to be coming up next spring and decide to tide us over until the final donations come in. And this has been reviewed, I assume, everything is?
Yeah, this has been reviewed by me, looked over by Rick. Everything's good to go, you can see, if you had turned your tablets the other way.
Oh, sorry.
You just took the rotate off.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we're at about 40% complete for the pool. So you can see 1,543,000 today minus the retainage, less the payments, brings us to 464,626.
Any other questions concerning the pay request from Duran Builders? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve the pay request for Duran Builders in the amount of $464,626.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the pay request. Are there any other comments, concerns or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to. Next, the council will convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1E for the deliberatory or negotiating of investing of public funds or conjunction of specific business, whether competitive for bargaining reasons, required a closed session relative to review and discussion of the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund for the Little Beginnings Childcare. Would somebody like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session, second.
We have a motion and second to go into closed session, roll call please.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember.